Hi, good evening. Just want to call the meeting to order for the Oxnard City Council for June 26, 2025. Madam Clerk, may we have the roll call and posting of the agenda, please?
Councilwoman Basua.
Here.
Mayor MacArthur.
Here.
Councilmember Perallo.
Here.
Councilwoman Perez.
Here.
Councilwoman Rodriguez.
Present.
Councilmember Starr.
Here.
Mayor Pro Temperan.
Here.
The agenda for this meeting was posted in the kiosk at City Hall, the Oxnard Public Library, the city administrative offices, and on the city's website on Thursday, June 13. Thank you.
Thank you. And prior to closed session, we will take public comments on the closed session agenda. Mr. Fisher, can you please provide a statement prior to closed session?
Thank you, Mayor. The city council will recess to a closed session pursuant to Government Code Section 549, 57.6, to review the status of labor negotiations and to review its available funds and funding priorities for the purpose of providing instructions to the city's negotiators: Ashley Golden, Assistant City Manager, and Steve Novo, Director of Human Resources, regarding the organizations specified in Item C1 of the meeting agenda.
Thank you. Madam Clerk, do we have any speakers for public comments prior to closed session?
And Mayor and Council members, we do not have any public speakers for closed session in person or virtually. Thank you.
Thank you. The city council will recess to a closed session, and at 6:00 p.m. we will begin with the regular meeting. Thank you.
Sorry, we're just, we're back in order for the city council meeting for Tuesday, June 26, 2025. We just emerged from closed session. Mr. Fisher, do you have anything from closed session?
Mayor, there are no actions to report out of closed session this evening.
Thank you. Madam Clerk, may we have the roll call and posting of the agenda?
Councilwoman Basula?
Here.
Mayor MacArthur?
Here.
Councilmember Corallo?
Here.
Councilwoman Perez?
Here.
Councilwoman Rodriguez?
Here.
Councilmember Starr?
Here.
Mayor Protemp Teran?
Here.
The agenda for this meeting was posted in the kiosk at City Hall, the Oxnard Public Library, the city administrative offices, and on the city's website on Thursday, June 13th. Thank you.
Thank you. We also have a student here Savannah Gaskill who will be graduating from Oxnard to EMS Corps who's going to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance. And afterwards, we'll take a moment of silence to, just in recognition of the people here in this community, in this region that have been affected by the unjust and harmful actions of ICE in our community, and also for the combatants and civilian personnel around the world that have been injured from the military actions that we've seen. So Savannah, if you can lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance, and then we'll take the moment of silence. Thank you.
Hats off, please. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, everyone. And I'm going to pass it over to the Vice Mayor if you want to say anything about the young lady.
Yes. Thank you, Mayor. So we have Savannah Gaskill joining us tonight as our graduate from from our first cohort, as I understand it, for EMS Corps. And she's going to share a little bit about her story and her journey, and we will take it from there. So I'll turn it over to you. Go ahead.
Good evening, Mayor, Mayor Protemp, and city council members. This is my first time reading this out loud, so bear with me. I want to begin by thanking everyone for being here today. I especially want to thank my class and my instructors for the incredible honor of speaking here, and my girlfriend, who is my number one support. I want to share my story with you and how EMS Corps has changed my life, but please remember, I'm just one of many in my class with a story like this, and one of many more who haven't yet been lucky enough to be a part of this program. The truth is, I shouldn't be alive today. By my 18th birthday, I had already survived multiple overdoses and a suicide attempt. I'd been in and out of rehabs, hospitals, and behavioral health centers. I didn't graduate high school. I'd been arrested and spent a few years on probation, and the only things I saw in my future were death, jail, or institutions. Everyone around me was in the same place. We weren't worried about SAT scores or school dances. We were just trying to survive. Today, I'm the only one to make it out. And a big reason for that is EMS Corps. I got sober at 18, but being sober wasn't enough. I needed direction, structure, and opportunity. Something I've learned the hard way is that sometimes doing the right thing and working hard just isn't enough. The time between getting sober and finding EMS Corps proved that. I wasn't using anymore, but I was still very lost. And then I found EMS Corps. The lessons I've learned here, the ones that really matter, aren't in any textbook. They're the ones that come from pain, from resilience, and from fighting to move forward when life is pushing you back. That's what separates people like us from the students in Ivy League classrooms. We've lived it, and we've earned it. EMS Corps gave me my big break. For the first time in my life, I feel confident about the future. Over the past five months, I've grown more than I thought possible, and the medical knowledge I've gained is just the tip of the iceberg. This program surrounds us with people who care. If we don't have a car, they give us a ride. If we're hungry, they feed us. We are supported completely so we can rise to meet the standard, not just survive it. EMS Corps puts us on a level, a level ground with people from more traditional paths, and the numbers prove that this works. We're becoming EMTs, nurses, and even doctors. I think a lot about the people that I've lost, who were robbed of a future and never got the chance to find themselves. Myself and many others in situations like this often carry a lot of guilt and question, why me? Why am I the one that's still alive? That guilt is a thief, and it will take your future too if you let it. EMS Corps has helped me understand that those feelings, the loss, the pain, they're not weaknesses, they're the reasons to keep going. The success we build here isn't just for us, it's for them too. And that belief is what keeps me moving forward. When giving up, getting high, or running away would be such an easier option. EMS Corps has given me more than an education, so much more. There are no words big enough to express what it means to me. This program pushes back against the statistics. No, not everyone will make it out, but the people behind EMS Corps reach for everyone in sight, and they can't do that without your support. I wish I had time to name every way our instructors have changed our lives, but I want to mention a few. Alejandro Villasenor for constantly finding new ways to raise the standard and making sure we get there. Lupe Melkor, our case manager, for going above and beyond to help us discover the value in ourselves. And finally, our main instructor, Melissa Corney. She has taught us, laughed with us, cried with us, and cared for us in a way I didn't know was possible. She reminds us constantly that everything we've been through, everything we've survived, is exactly what makes us perfect for this field. I never imagined that being a drug-addicted high school dropout would lead me anywhere good. Honestly, I thought I'd be long gone by now, but these people prove me wrong every single day, and so do my classmates. We are the lucky ones, and I hope more and more people get the chance to stand beside us in an EMS Corps uniform, beating the odds and becoming the people we once needed for the people that still need it. Thank you.
So it seems we have some folks joining you here at the podium, or coming up to the dice. Like, we have a certificate for you as well. So yeah, if we can have folks come up?
Savannah, we have this certificate for you, and thank you for sharing so much about yourselves. It's so inspiring to hear about your journey. So thank you, and thank you for everybody that came up here to join her. Savannah, this is for you, right here? I'm going to read it out, okay? Certificate of Achievement is presented to Savannah Gaskill, where as a city council, the city of Oxnard wishes to extend its sincere congratulations to Savannah for her dedication and perseverance, and her participation in the emergency medical services program is very commendable. And the city council, the city of Oxnard presents this certificate of achievement to Savannah upon the completion and graduation from the EMS Corps, and extends our best wishes for success in our future endeavors. And it's my honor to present this to you.
Hello? We'll start from the left to the right. This is Jaden. This is, this is JR. This is Mahdi. This is Luca, Sebastian, Daniela, Melissa, Dave, and Alejandro. And Lupe. Lupe's back there.
Okay, all right, sounds good. Well, thank you very much. Thank you. Thank you, everybody, for coming up here.
We have our graduates here tonight.
Sounds good. Okay, should we call them up?
Actually, one did it.
Yeah, absolutely.
All right, so we're going to have Savannah hang out here with us for another moment. And for those who have seen the city council meetings since January, we were very fortunate to have a number of students from throughout the high schools in Oxnard and serve the Oxnard community come here to do exactly as Savannah did, lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance, and then tell us a little bit about their story and their journey growing up in the city of Oxnard. And first, I have to commend Savannah so much for all of your journey. I think that people watching, and even people in this room, not only give you so much of how proud they are of you and how we're so pulling for what you're going to do next, which is, I'm sure, continue to be amazing things, but many of them may see themselves or people they know in your story. And I so very much thank you for being willing to share that, that part of your story, and I look forward to what you do next. So thank you. So with that, I would like to invite also our now graduates who came to us this year as 12th graders, and now here we are at the end of June. They are now officially graduates from high school in the city of Oxnard. So let's have them all join us up here, and let's give them a round of applause as they make their way up. And as they come up here, I, I knew there was a roll of the dice in this going into it, that late June, we were going to have vacations, students who've already gone away to college, and so we worked to get as many of them up this evening as we could. Good to see you again. Nice to see you again, Montse. And we will reintroduce our folks here in just a moment. Yes? Come on up. All right. So with that, I'm going to just go ahead and pass the mic. If you wouldn't mind sharing your name with us again, and then where you went to school, and then just a quick second about what's next for you. Some of us may be going to college, some of us trade, some of us going to work, some of us starting businesses, for all I know, but
Hello, everyone. My name's Yvonne. I went to school at Ace Charter in Camrio, and then my future plans are go to Cal State Northridge to study construction management to hopefully get into public works here in Oxnard.
Hi, everyone. My name is Montserrat Sanchez. I just graduated from Oxnard High School, and this fall, I'll be studying political science at UC Berkeley in hopes of becoming a US Congresswoman.
Hi, everyone. My name is Jimena. I went to Channel Islands, and now I'm going to UC Irvine to study biology and political science, and hopefully become a lawyer.
Hello, everyone. My name is Letizia Alejandro, and I'm just graduate from high school equivalency from Oxnard to school.
Thank you for coming. As you can see, we have just tremendous talent here in our community. The girls that are going to Northridge, Berkeley, UC Irvine. The girls that are going to Northridge, Berkeley, UC Irvine, and then Savannah's journey, and then Letizia's as well. And then next week, we got Isaiah coming. Isaiah Chavez, who is a youth boxing national champ, trying to make the U.S. Olympics for 2028. So, we, you know, part of doing this is just to support the young people in our community and just to showcase the amount of talent we have here, and they're going places. I know she's coming after your job, Mike Wolf, right? She's coming. Public Works Director coming up. U.S. Senator coming up down the road. So, we're just so proud of them, and this is one of the reasons we do this. So, thank you. I see your principal out there from Adolte. She's out there as well. There's a lot of support for all of these young ladies. So, thank you very much for coming up here, Letizia. Thank you, and Montse. Best of luck up in Berkeley and UC Irvine and Northridge. Okay? Absolutely.
So, the last two items on this, if I may. First off, we have some really great things that have been provided to you courtesy of the Visit Oxnard Bureau, as well as the collection, and from the downtown Oxnard folks. So, if you turn behind... And these are things that are certainly branded with Oxnard, because wherever you go next, we want you to remember where you came from, but also show it off to people so they can come visit us, right? And tell them, hey, we have the Cowboys coming next month also. But those are for you, and... That sounded like full support there. Regardless. And then those who couldn't join us this evening, we will get their bags over to them as well. But I wanted to thank our community partners and our local businesses for standing behind you all as well and everything that you're looking to do in the future and everything you've done thus far. And the last thing I wanna say is, those who are here supporting all of you tonight, whether it be parents, family, friends, EMS Core mates, if everyone could please stand. Those who are here with these folks tonight. And it's the rare person who does this all alone. And you can see there's not only all these folks out in the audience who've helped each of you on your journey, but now you have everyone else in the room, everyone watching tonight, and all of us up here who are standing behind you on your next steps as well. So, wishing you well on your next chapter. Congratulations on everything you've done. And again, I look forward to what you're gonna do next. So, thank you. I'll turn it back to you, Mayor.
Thank you, Jenny. I see you too. Thank you for coming. Everybody, thank you for coming and supporting all these young people up here. So, thank you, and best of luck in college. Hopefully, you guys will make a small circle back here to our city, okay? Oh, yeah.
Mayor. Can I... Counsel, I would, and members in the audience, the individual that, at least to me, that was the face of this, the very first group that were up here, was our fire chief, Alexander Hamilton. And he brought stuff to our attention. It's terrific to see the results. But I wanna make sure that we realize it's him and the people that work in his fire department and the people supporting them, the rest of the staff and the rest of the council. And Chief Hamilton, thank you very much. If there's something you'd like to say to let people in the audience of television or something to find out how they might apply for getting into this program?
Mayor Protem, members of council, Alex Hamilton, Fire Chief. I was gonna say a few words, and I think Savannah was very ready to get the rest of her classmates together. So, this program, EMS Chief Jaime Vier and myself were actually reminiscing today. We started talking about this in September of 2023. And so, we were able to find some funders and some collaborators to put the funding together for this program. This program is born out of the notion that folks that go through adversity and then given the tools that they need to thrive are gonna make phenomenal public servants. And I think this group here has... I can tell you, this group here has absolutely exceeded our expectations. This program, while I love what I do as Fire Chief, this program is one of those ones that is just sort of a cherry on top in terms of what it does to motivate me. But the students that, the young adults that have come into this program all have stories like Savannah told today. And our second cohort has already been selected and is getting started, getting ready to get started. Through what we've been able to do with the funding, through getting creative and stretching our dollars as far as possible, we originally had funding for cohorts of 20. The next four cohorts moving forward will be now 24 students. Almost everyone in this cohort has employment waiting for them. They're all graduating tomorrow night. We've now also secured funding so that after they have finished six months of EMT experience, most likely riding on an ambulance. We've actually secured funding for those who would like to move on to paramedic. We have funding through our partners at the Workforce Development Board for them to be able to train as paramedics, which is another nine months of training. There are so many parts about this program that is fantastic, but it really is, it's a Ventura County-wide collaboration. We have hospitals, we have Vista Schools, we have the local EMS agency, the ambulance companies, all of the fire departments. Everyone is involved to make this program a success. And so, getting to your question, Councilmember Parello, is we will soon be recruiting for our third cohort. That cohort will start in January of 2026. If you go to oxnardeemscore.org is where you can fill out an expressive interest, set up the application process. This program is open for individuals between the age of 17 and a half and 26. Okay? Thank you for all the head nods. And even if you're not sure if you're eligible to apply, apply anyway. Because one of the things we do with all our applicants is make sure that if there is, if they're not eligible to, or they don't get accepted into our program, we still make sure that if there's a benefit out there that they're not currently receiving, we'll connect them with that benefit. So, we help them with healthcare navigation, whatever it is they need. So, I would encourage anyone that has an interest to apply. There was one other benefit that we are working towards is anyone from this cohort that is interested in the career in the fire service was obviously, you know, I have a selfish interest in that. Anyone that is interested in that will be joining the statewide firefighter eligibility list, meaning that any fire department in the state that uses that eligibility list, their names will appear in front of those fire departments. So, we obviously would like to see them stay here and provide service to our residents. But more important than that is a fulfilling career in public service. Thank you. I appreciate the time today.
And Mayor, just from my point of view, I know applause are on a line for the most part, but this is something for the fire, the staff, the council, and the entire residents of Oxnard. I think we should be very proud of this program, and it's a benefit to all of us, and all of us are involved in this. I'd like to give an applause.
Absolutely. Thank you. Thank you, Chief. I know I was certainly impressed with what Savannah shared with us. I, you know, coming from police, people shouldn't be, shouldn't get a life sentence for bad decisions, but should be judged on where they're at now and where they're going. So, Savannah, thank you for having the courage to share your experience with us and know that an entire community is behind you. Thank you. We'll move to the next item on the agenda, and this is for public comments on items not on the agenda and also for non-action items. A person may address a legislative body only in matters not appearing on the agenda and within the subject matter jurisdiction of the legislative body. And on non-action items such as ceremonial items, report of city manager, executive director, secretary, city council, housing authority, successor agency, financing authority, business committee reports. Speaker requests shall be submitted as set forth on the first page of this agenda. Speakers are limited to three minutes. After 30 minutes, if all speakers have not had the opportunity to speak, the remaining speakers will be given an opportunity to speak prior to the adjournment of the meeting. The legislative body cannot enter into a detailed discussion or take action on any items presented during public comments at this time. Such items may only be referred to the city manager or scheduled on a subsequent agenda for discussion. Persons wishing to speak on public hearing items should do so at this time.
Mayor, I'm sorry to interrupt you. I was just wondering about something.
Go ahead.
It looks like the language that we have for what public comments on items on the agenda was changed. I don't know when that happened, but just the extra language here about limiting them to speaking on this and this and this and this. Something's in advance of even the, you know, the committee report being given, let's say. And I just didn't remember seeing, just a few weeks ago, it looks like it wasn't there. Now, it's...
Yeah. And actually, let me add some more language to that, too. Anyone wishing to speak on items not on the agenda and non-action items, they can come forward and fill out a speaker card. Or if you are joining us virtually, please press star nine to raise your hand. And then, Madam Clerk, I know we added some additional verbiage here. Madam Clerk, do you wanna elucidate further as to why we added this verbiage here? Or maybe you can refer to Mr. Fisher if you wanna provide some clarity?
Thank you, Mayor. That's reflective of what is in the council's procedures manual, and there has been some confusion in the past with people wanting to speak. In fact, Councilman Starr, before he was on the council, had an issue that he brought to the district attorney's attention about public comment on city manager report items. So, this is just reflective of what is in the council's procedures and consistent with the guidance from the district attorney's office.
I guess my question is, how would someone make a comment on, let's say, what the city manager reports before the city manager even reports it? If the whole idea of people being able to give comment is based on what they've seen here, I don't understand this. It seems to be the cart before the horse.
I would recommend you review your letter from the DA that explained that, and that's not on the agenda to discuss. So, if we wish to review that, that would be something for a different meeting with an agendized item.
So, what we do have is we do have Measure M. And Measure M's pretty clear that people can speak on each item. So, while the district attorney was talking about a different question than Measure M, Measure M has certain requirements. So, I'm just a little confused by seeing the new language here, and it wasn't brought to us ahead of time. It just kind of appeared. And I think that we should review Measure M again and see what its requirements are and see if this is actually in line with that.
Sure. And it sounds like maybe we can put that on a future agenda item. Maybe you have a refresher or revisiting Measure M? Go ahead, Mayor Protem.
Oh, no, I was just gonna say, just in recognition of the existence of the Brown Act, I know that there's language that we're talking about here, but perhaps this should be agendized for a formal discussion so the public can weigh in and know that that's something we're going to discuss in the future if it were to be agendized. So, I'd recommend we move on to the comments.
Okay. Is that satisfactory? We'll put that on a future agenda for revisiting Measure M.
That's fine.
Okay. Do that. We've got one speaker, Mr. Garcia.
Good evening, City Council, Mayor. I was here about three years ago, and I'm back again. I've been in Oxnard since 1972, so I've seen Oxnard grow and the different changes and other. But I wanted to address three items. You know, they're very basic to me because they're local affecting me or the residents. I wanted just to bring you to attention that the railroad train continuously to drive over 45 miles per hour within the city limits because they go faster than I drive on Oxnard Boulevard. And the signage on the graphics, they're old. They're white and brown, they're dirty. There is, I would like to see increased signage. You know, even a yellow sign that says, you know, there's a warning because as you've seen, we have a lot of deaths. At that time, three years ago, we have a lot of deaths. And I came over and talked about this same issue, and I haven't seen any major issues. But I at least see the signage improve because 20 years go by or 40 years go by, the signs get old, and I think it would be good to have warning or yellow signs that says you're going to a crossing because right now they're faded gray. So, I would like to bring that to your attention. Also, another minor issue for me, where I drive on the Statham Boulevard, and I've driven there for many years, I just recognize there's people that are walking by, they have to get off the sidewalk and walk on the street because the sidewalk has been or has been taken over by the business. And I was told that, well, the business has been there forever. Well, guess what? You know, there's sidewalk on the right and sidewalk on the left, and the people have to go on the street. People shouldn't do that, but people get caught up as they're walking because the sidewalk ends by a fence. And so, I would like to have somebody to take a look at it. I brought it before to attention through the 311. I can tell you the address is 2650 Statham. But I just recall because there was a truck parked right on the right way. Guess what? Everybody has to go out on the streets. And there's not a lot of people, but I saw a woman with her stroller walking, had to get off the sidewalk and walk on the street. And I saw two of the workers from the clinic as walking, and they had to go on the street to go across to the market in the front. So, that's kind of another issue we'd like help to address because even though grandfather doesn't mean it's still appropriate for the safety of us that walk through there with other people. And last, but not least, more important, I just want to give kudos, recognize the city and the police officers have been very patient with the protests in favor of the immigrants. And I think it's important to acknowledge that they're working with the community. And also, their services, to me, they have been better. When I call, sometimes I call the non-emergency number. The dispatcher is very patient and very nice. Anyway, I just wanted to acknowledge that.
Thank you, Ms. Garcia. And if you wouldn't mind leaving your number with the clerk, I'll also go back with you.
Thank you.
Thank you for sharing that.
Madam Clerk, any other speakers?
Excuse me. Mayor and council members, we do not have any additional speakers on items not on the agenda in person and virtually. Thank you.
Thank you. The next item on the agenda is item G. This is the report from our city manager, Mr. Nguyen. Go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I plan on calling the fire chief up, but Councilmember Parello beat me to that. So, I have nothing further. Thank you.
Thank you. The next item on the agenda is item H. This is where the city council members can provide a report. We'll start to my left with Councilwoman Perez.
Thank you, Mayor. I first wanted to start my report by just sharing that we are in the second session of our 2025 Summer Youth Academy and wanted to thank our mayor for coming out, our city manager, who also shared some myths about the city of Oxnard with our young people, and also just our city staff and Mayor Protem as well for his leadership as we co-facilitate these sessions for the next couple of weeks. But, yeah, it's been a great opportunity to just showcase what the landscape of local government is with young people in the area and also just provide information on the types of pathways that are available within our city and the various departments. So, really looking forward to us transitioning into the next couple of weeks where young people will be able to go through the various departments within the city to understand... able to go through the various departments within the city to understand what the lay of the land is, meet some of our city staff, and really see what types of opportunities are available. So thank you again to our, our staff and to Mayor Protem for your leadership on that. I am, I myself and other council members here had the opportunity to attend Juneteenth last Saturday, so really wanted to give credit to the committee there for continuously bringing such an amazing event to our community. And then the last thing that I wanted to share is that I really wanted to express gratitude to all of our neighborhood council chairs in District Six. I feel really lucky to be able to represent a portion of South Oxnard where many of our community members are really civically engaged and involved, including our neighborhood council chairs. One of our neighborhood council chairs from Cal Geisler had reached out, so also wanted to share my gratitude to our new beat officer in Cal Geisler, who will be joining myself at a meetup with our neighborhood in Cal Geisler on Thursday, July 10th at 4:00 p.m. So if there's anybody that lives in the Cal Geisler neighborhood, we'll be meeting at Lathrop Park. So those are my reports. Thank you, Mayor. Back to you.
Thank you. Ms. Porello?
Thank you very much. I want to thank, as Councilman Perez, Councilmember Perez stated, the Juneteenth organization is a very nice event. I've had the opportunity to speak with Public Works several times, and I've had the opportunity to visit and view some of the work that Public Works has done. If you're driving through various areas of the city of Oxnard, you'll see that they've done tremendous work with getting the weeds down, mulch in areas, and removing dead trees. It's a compliment to them. And that's, that's my report for tonight. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Porello. Vice Mayor?
Yes. Thank you, Mayor. Not much to report when we had a meeting just a few days ago, and then we'll have another one next week. So it's a busy time for us. But I, I do want to thank my colleagues who were able to attend the Juneteenth celebration. I did send my regrets to the group that unfortunately, we had a planned outing that weekend with my family, and so I was unable to be there, but I did see pictures posted on social media and videos. And always a great event, and so I appreciate those who put it together and then who are great hosts in having you all attend. So just one last thing. This was our last student this evening to do the pledge of allegiance and tell us about their story. And I just want to thank the mayor and my colleagues here for supporting this effort. It was something that I'd been thinking about for some time, and I really think that the young people in the city of Oxnard truly need to know that this community has their back and that the challenges they face and the adversity that they overcome, these are things that are unique to them but are also things that are shared by those who came before them. And I, it's just important to me that they know that their story is their story, and we are with them on that journey as well, and will support them each step of the way. I also want to share that not only was it an absolute pleasure to be able to coordinate this with our principals, and thank you to all of them who helped with it, and to Chief Hamilton for recruiting Savannah for this evening, but I also, with the exception of one student who wanted extra practice, I didn't know the stories until they shared them the evening of as well. So it was my first time hearing those details along with all of you, and I, just in, in awe about many, 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 or every story that they, they brought, and I, again, I look forward to what they do next. And in my one minute I have left, I think Savannah is a great example, as are many of our other students, that remember that resiliency is something that we all have innate to us, but when we have adults or supporters in our life who meaning, have meaningful, genuine care for us and give us opportunities for meaningful participation and have high expectations of us, that can help us to overcome almost any challenge we face. And those three things, it sounds like are some core components to the EMS program. And I think Savannah and her cohort are probably great examples of what the outcomes can be when those three things are offered to young people, especially if they feel like they don't have that elsewhere in their life. So anyways, that's enough for my youth development research. I appreciate the time on that, Mayor. I'll turn it back to you.
Absolutely. Thank you. Councilwoman Basua?
Thank you. I just want to take this opportunity to wish my twin brothers, who turned 33 today, a happy birthday. I'm missing out on the celebration for year two, but I hope they're enjoying their home-cooked meal. My mom.
Go ahead, I'm sorry. Councilmember, go ahead.
Thank you. I attended the Association of Water Agencies meeting last week to see a presentation by Jeff Palmer, who works for the county, and he also heads up the Fox Canyon Groundwater Management Agency. So he was talking about, speaking, he was speaking about the efforts to remove the, I'm pronouncing this wrong, I'm sure, Matilah Dam, which was built in the 1950s. And it's basically become unusable because the silt has accumulated to the point where it's almost like a waterfall now rather than a dam. So at some point, they're going to have to remove it, I suppose. I was able to speak to Mr. Palmer afterwards further about the GMA to get a better understanding of how that's working. He's, he's agreed to look into some questions I had concerning groundwater conservation credits and annual groundwater allocations and how are those tracked. So I'm looking forward to his response to that so I can give that to staff. And regarding the gentleman that spoke about the problem with signs, I think we have challenges in other parts of the city, too, with signs. As an example, if you take Gonzales, where Dead Ends at Rice, there's signs there that kind of give direction that says you can make a U-turn from the most left lane, but you can only make a left turn from the other two lanes, and it's, it's no longer, it's hardly visible, and it's so faded. So I, I don't know what our process is, is for looking at these and, and, you know, you know, fixing them. I mean, to me, it's, it's a safety issue and, and it's a beautification issue as well.
Thank you. Thank you, Councilmember Starr. Councilwoman Berdugas?
Yes. I know that other council members have shared that we attended the Juneteenth celebration. It was an excellent event, and I just want to thank all the organizers who made that happen. I've also been attending the Heritage Square Concerts. So if you haven't checked them out, please make your way on a Friday night. It's been, it's been a fun time, a nice, healthy way of celebrating and receiving our summer. I know that tomorrow, there's going to be a, a press conference at the County of Ventura where several folks will be in attendance to discuss just how some of the immigrant families are being affected by the ICE raids, but not just that, just businesses and other community folks here in Ventura County. So I know that several electeds were invited and will be in attendance tomorrow morning at the courthouse at 10:00 a.m. So I'll be attending that. We also had a District Four Zoom meeting for, for our area. We were talking about curb cuts, fireworks, and I know Chief Benitez said that he could have somebody come and talk to our meeting, to our group next month in July. And we're also with Angela White Combs' leadership. We're going to be doing the National Night Out on August 5th. So very excited about that. Last but not least, I also attended the Salvation Army Annual Gala. So it was nice to, to see all the good work that they do, not just Ventura, but throughout the county, and a lot of those families here in Oxnard benefiting from those services. I know that when I first got sworn in, there was a, a fire a few doors down from my house, and Salvation Army really came through to help with like weekly, you know, food distributions and other support systems. So that's my report for now. Thank you.
Thank you. I'll make my, my report really brief as well. I, I continue to, to do radio programs weekly, speaking directly to our Spanish-speaking community on the, what I believe are unjust and harmful actions by ICE without any due process that's occurring here in our city and our wider jurisdiction. I've also had the, the pleasure of doing a, a video, and Chief Benitez joined me on that video. Again, just dispelling the notion that our police department is working in collaboration with ICE and assisting them in any way with any field operations. And it's hurtful sometimes when you see these videos being disseminated showing our local police force, and the narrative is not, is not correct. So I've been continuing to dispel that notion that we are collaborating with ICE. And I've also gone here, just walking our downtown, speaking directly with our local businesses, a lot of these family-owned businesses that are, that are and continue to be impacted by these ICE operations, and just simply informing them of what they can do to, to stay safe and protect their employees and themselves. I've also held forums with individual families who've invited me into their home. They invited other neighbors, and so I could speak directly with, with them in Spanish. I'm fluent in Spanish. I've been speaking directly with them. Again, just reemphasizing our position with our police department that we are now working in collaboration with ICE, and also informing them on how they can stay safe and protected and disseminating the information that has been also shared by many of our nonprofit groups. I've also attended, along with our city manager, we did a grand opening, a ribbon cutting, groundbreaking of a multi-industrial complex on Sacioca Farms, or the old Sacioca Farms right across from, it'll be adjacent to our Amazon Distribution Center. It is going to be great for our economic input here in our region. This morning, too, I attended an event over with Cal Fire at the old Youth Authority site and spoke directly to a group of about 33 young people who have been incarcerated and are looking for, or have been, talk about resilience and talking about being, given a second chance by Cal Fire, just a tremendous, tremendous opportunity for them because oftentimes, you know, some of them talked about having been born into toxic families and just all the contributors that affected the decisions that they made that ended, ended up putting them in jail. Some of them, you know, life sentences, but having had a second opportunity now that with Cal Fire, with the potential to be productive and, and be active members of our community. And just lastly, there's a man event this Saturday, Mothers Against Young Driving, and as well as a VC CDC 13th Annual Ventura County Home Ownership Conference also occurring this Saturday morning, which I will be attending and providing some, some remarks at both of those events. So a lot of things happening here in our region. So thank you, council members, for your input as well. We'll move now to the next item on the agenda. This is the review of our consent agenda. And City Clerk, you have an announcement to make regarding item K1?
Thank you, Mayor. So on item K1, the city council minutes for June 3rd, some corrections on page eight. It should read QUITAM, spelled Q-U-I-T-A-M. I, I put K-E-M, K-E-Y-M, and that's wrong. And then on page 15, Councilmember Starr is recusing himself rather than abstaining. And those are the two changes. Thank you.
Thank you. Do any council members have any consent items they wish to discuss or pull?
Two, three, and four.
And which, two, three, and four?
Yeah.
Okay. Sounds good. So the only one left is the, the minutes. So I make a motion to approve the minutes.
Is it as corrected?
Yeah, as corrected. Sorry, as corrected, yeah. Is there a second? Yeah. Ms. Porello made a second.
Thank you. Mayor MacArthur?
Yes.
Councilmember Porello?
Yes.
Councilwoman Perez?
Yes.
Councilwoman Rodriguez?
Yes.
Councilmember Starr?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Teran?
Yes.
Councilwoman Basua?
Yes.
And this motion carries seven to zero. Thank you.
Thank you. Also, anyone wishing to speak on the information consent agenda, they can come forward and fill out a speaker card, or if you're joining us virtually, please press star nine to, or raise your hand. And we'll wait a few seconds to see if anybody has any public comments on this item.
Thank you, Mayor. We actually have a virtual speaker, virtual speaker ending in 3259. If you can press star six to unmute, and you have three minutes starting now.
Yeah, hi. I actually raised my hand to comment after councilmembers' comments and reports on their activities. Now that we're in summer recess from all the high school kids coming through and giving them their, giving their stories, I think we need to address the seniors. And I would like it to be a presentation called Lessons Learned. And have your retired people, have your nonprofits, Hollywood Beach Community Association, Surf Rider, the Ormond Beach Volunteers, come and talk about the life choices they've made and reflect on how those choices worked out. And let your living legacies tell the community, especially the young people, their reflections on their life. I think it's a perfect opportunity, given that it's summer, and since we have quite a few seniors in our community, including our senior centers, which by the way are inadequate, but that's another topic, I think it might be an idea that you should entertain. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you for calling in for your comments. Any other speakers, Madam Clerk?
Mayor MacArthur and council members, we do not have any additional speakers in person or virtually for the information and consent agenda. Thank you.
Thank you. We'll move now to item two on the consent agenda. This is from the Community Development Department. Subject agreement to prepare the transit-oriented development high-quality transit corridor specific plan. The recommendations that the city council approve and authorize the mayor to execute an agreement with run associates for a period up to two years for an amount not to exceed $1,075,609 for the preparation of a transit-oriented development high-quality transit corridor specific plan and associated tasks. This item did not originate in committee. So we'll go, go to you, Councilmember Starr, on this item.
Thank you. By the way, I'm happy that this is paid for with a grant from SCAG. It's not coming out of our pockets. I'm just, I'm just, I guess I'm just trying to understand the value proposition here. What exactly will a transit-oriented development high-quality transit corridor specific plan allow us to do that we could not do otherwise? Would be my first question. Then my second question would be is, well, when this is finished, how would we, as a council, be able to measure the success, the results of that? So those are, those are my two questions.
Mr. Pinkley, or whomever from staff. Thank you. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Mayor. Councilmember Starr, Kathleen Mallory, planning and sustainability manager. The city was the recipient of this grant, as noted in the staff report. The designation of a high-quality transit corridor was made by the Southern California Association of Governments, and it identified, so they identified this corridor down from 101 down Oxnard Boulevard, down to the southern area of the city, Huiney Saviors, roughly in that area. It also extends northerly into the city of Ventura. So this plan is, and this corridor was one of the main reasons the city received a higher regional housing needs assessment, or RENA, Affordable Housing Allocation. Basically, the reason why the city has an 8,549 RENA housing allocation to facilitate development between 2021 and 2029. So this high-quality transit corridor results in added housing units with the city. That corridor is correlated with locations of transit. So it's correlated, the TOD, the Transit Oriented Development, is along the same line as the high-quality transit corridor. So they're synonymous. What we're looking at doing, what this grant will allow us to do is to come up with development incentives to facilitate development in key areas along that high-quality transit corridor by creating a transit-oriented development specific plan. A lot of acronyms. So that, so you've asked two important and good questions. What will this money allow us to do? It'll provide planning money to help us develop incentives in up to four areas along that corridor by developing a plan to help incentivize development in certain areas of the city along that corridor. So that's the first thing I heard you ask, Councilmember Starr. The second was, how do you measure success? And that's a good one. That's something also that SCAG is asking us, and we will have metrics for. Examples of success will be incentivizing building, development that is focused in that area, collaboration with the community, collaboration- that area, collaboration with the community, collaboration with the transit districts. Overall, in the long term, success will be measured by those developers that take advantage of this amazing specific plan. What other questions may I ask, or may I answer for you, Councilmember?
So just a little bit of clarity, is it, do we have higher RENA numbers because of this? So we have a higher requirement for us to build because of this corridor? If this corridor didn't exist, would our RENA numbers be lower, and it wouldn't be as much of a requirement?
The corridor, the transit-oriented corridor, the high-quality transit corridor, was one of the reasons the city had a high RENA number.
So this was actually before this even, so what I'm hearing you say is that this specific plan we're developing is not what causes us to have the higher RENA numbers, the higher RENA numbers already existed prior to this?
Yes, the, that HQTC was one of the inputs towards our RENA number, along with a few, a number of other things.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Go ahead, Mr. Perlo.
Ms. Mallory, can you explain a little bit about if there's something is not completed, the grant could be lost, and we would not be at risk, this would not be anything out of our pocket? Please explain that.
Yeah, Mayor, Councilmember Perallo. Right now, the grant, we're waiting for confirmation of an extension. Southern California Association of Governments has been working with the State of California Housing and Community Development, and we're waiting to find out if they'll give us an extension. It's not just the city of Oxnard, it's all the grant recipients in Southern California.
Thank you. Any other questions? What's the pleasure of counsel on this item?
I'll second.
Thank you. Call for the vote, Madam Clerk.
Councilmember Perallo.
Yes.
Councilwoman Perez.
Yes.
Councilwoman Rodriguez.
Yes.
Councilman Starr.
Yes.
Mayor Protemteran.
Yes.
Councilwoman Basua.
Yes.
Mayor MacArthur.
Yes.
And this motion carries seven to zero. Thank you.
Thank you. We'll go to K three from the Finance Department. Month report and accounting of all receipts, dispersments, and fund balances. The recommendations that the city council receive and file this report in accounting of all receipts, dispersments, and fund balances for the month of April 2025. This item did not originate in committee, and Mr. Javier Chaguyan Lasseros here to answer any questions. We'll go to you, Councilmember Starr, for this one.
Thank you. So I realize that this report is evolving over time and getting better. I know one of the things that I requested was a comparison of year-to-date figures for the current year with the year-to-date figures for the prior year, so I can have a better feeling of where we are year-to-date. I know you're working on that, I just wanted to know, do you have kind of an inkling of when we might be able to see that? It might be in a month, or two, or three?
So, good evening, Javier Chaguyan Lassero, Chief Financial Officer, City of Oxnard. The report include a comparison with the prior year expenses. There's a column.
That's for the full year, though, right? I'm looking at year-to-date versus year-to-date, because then I can get a better feel for how are we tracking so far this year versus so far last year? If I'm looking at just the total, that doesn't really work.
As well, within these reports, we'll be able to provide that information for comparison. I cannot give you an exact date, we're just working on getting those reports ready.
And that's fine, so maybe sometime in the next few months, you think, perhaps?
As we have a full year with this format of reporting, we will be able to start adding the comparison with the prior year.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions on this item? Okay, what's the pleasure of counsel on this item? Sorry, it's your fault, thank you. We'll go to the next one, K four. This is from the IT Department. Agreement with Toshiba Business Solutions for printers and scanners. The recommended actions that the city council approve and authorize the mayor to execute a five-year agreement with Toshiba America Business Solutions for the purpose of citywide management of printing, scanning, and copying services in the amount of seven forty-five, eight forty, plus a ten percent contingency amount of seventy-four thousand five eighty-four to cover future needs or incidental costs for a total authorized amount of eight hundred and twenty thousand four hundred and twenty-four and eighty-eight cents. And the Finance and Governance Committee approved this three-zero back on June third, 2025. And we'll go to you, I know our IT director is here, we'll go to you, Councilmember Starr.
Thank you. So as I said at the June ten committee meeting, I said your reports are very good, and that I especially appreciated your attempt to make it an apples-to-apples comparison, that you took into account inflation, even without taking into account the inflation that we've experienced last few years in nominal terms, there's even savings as to what was spent previously. The one thing that I'd love to see at the council meeting level is, you had a great PowerPoint presentation, and somehow it didn't transfer over into this report to the council. So I think that we're, the report today kind of does you a disservice, because it doesn't show what you were able to show in your presentation, so I just wanted to say thank you once again for that, and I'm hoping that in the future, that when we have a PowerPoint presentation at the committee level, that it makes its way up to the council level as well. And that's it.
Very good. Rob Rubin, CIO for the city. Good evening, Mayor, Mayor Protem, and Councilmembers. I apologize for that. It was also, though, in the Measure M video, fortunately, the PowerPoint did get walked through on that video. Apologize for the clerical error, and is clearly on my side, but I appreciate the kind words, though, too. Thank you. We saw it in committee, but thank you, but thank you, Mr. Rubin. What's the, what's the pleasure of counsel on this item?
Move to, move to recommend action.
Second.
Madam Clerk, the vote?
Councilwoman Perez.
Yes.
Councilwoman Rodriguez.
Aye.
Councilmember Starr.
Yes.
Mayor Protemteran.
Yes.
Mayor MacArthur.
Yes.
Councilwoman Basua.
Yes.
Councilmember Perallo.
Yes.
And this motion carries seven to zero. Thank you.
I'd like to second Mr. Starr's comments, the PowerPoint would be excellent.
Yeah. I don't know if you heard that, Mr. Rubin, but Mr. Perallo mentioned he'd like to just second the comments made by Councilmember Starr. We'll go to the next item on the agenda. This is item M one from Public Works. Subject Sixth Amendment to Agreement with Big Truck Rentals LLC for Short-Term Rental of Refuge Collection Vehicles for the Environmental Resources Division. The recommended action is that the city council approve and authorize the mayor to execute a Sixth Amendment to a rental agreement with Big Truck Rental LLC in the amount of one million two hundred and twenty-six thousand five forty-one for a new total not to exceed cost of six million three oh four five seventy-six, and extend the term to June thirtieth, 2026, for the rental of refuse collection vehicles. This item did not originate in committee, as it is a continuation of an item previously approved by the city council back on June twenty-seventh, 2024. And we have staff here from Public Works to answer any questions we may have. Go, we'll start with you, Mr. Perlo. Go ahead.
Can you just share with us the, we've been, the performance level for the equipment that we're talking about here has been satisfactory to our expectations?
Good evening, Mayor, Mayor Protem, councilmembers. Councilman Perallo, yes, those vehicles that are rented are usually twenty-five, twenty-four, so they're really new, we haven't had any issues with them. You're welcome.
Any other comments before we open it up for public comment? No. Madam Clerk, are there any public speakers on this item?
Mayor and councilmembers, we do not have any public speakers in person or virtually for this item. Thank you.
I move the recommended action.
I will second.
Wonderful. Madam Clerk, the vote?
Councilmember Perallo.
Yes.
Councilwoman Perez.
Yes.
Councilwoman Rodriguez.
Aye.
Councilmember Starr.
Yes.
Mayor Protemteran.
Yes.
Councilwoman Basua.
Yes.
Mayor MacArthur.
Yes.
And this motion carries seven to zero. Thank you.
Thank you. We will now move to item M two from Public Works. Subject the modification of the City of Oxnard Community Facilities District Number Nine. This entails North Shore and Mandalay Bay. An approval of the deposit and reimbursement agreement. The recommendation is that the city council, acting as the legislative body of the City of Oxnard Community Facilities District Number Nine, adopt the following resolutions. Number one, a resolution approving a deposit and reimbursement agreement relating to the change proceedings for the City of Oxnard's Community Facilities District Number Nine. Two, a resolution consideration declaring its intention to modify the rate and method of proportionment of the special tax relating to the City of Oxnard Community Facilities Districts Number Nine. Increase certain special tax rates, add a new special tax, increase the maximum bonded indebtedness, amend a funding and acquisition agreement, revise the appropriations limit of said community facilities district, and other related actions in connection thereto, and setting the public hearing for July fifteenth, 2025. And this was approved by the Finance and Governance Committee on May thirteenth, 2025, was approved two to one, and I know Mr. Wolf is here from Public Works to answer any questions we may have. Any councilmembers have any questions for him or his staff at this time? Nothing, no question? Any, any, any public comments?
Mayor and councilmembers, we do not have any public speakers in person or virtually for this item. Thank you.
Thank you.
Oh, I'm sorry, we, we do, three, three.
Yes, we do. Councilwoman Rodriguez's hand was covering the.
Oh, God.
Pointed. I'm sorry, we'll start with Trent Royal.
Good evening, Mayor and council on, my name is Trent Royal. I'm here representing Toro Enterprises. We are a local union contractor located in the city of Oxnard. We performed many projects and are currently performing many projects for the city, and I would like to voice our support of the project. We've had the pleasure of doing a large portion of the construction on-site, and our contract do quite a bit more, and I think it's a good project for the community and for the citizens of Oxnard. That's all I have. Thank you.
I appreciate Trent, thank you. We'll go to the next speaker. We'll go to Bill Myers, Bill? Yeah, go ahead, Mr. Myers.
Good evening, Mayor, Mayor Protem, and councilmembers. I'm Bill Myers, I'm the representative for Fifth Harbor, owner, the owner of the property. I would just really like to thank staff, city staff, from city manager, city attorney, our director of Public Works, have been just fantastic to work with, and there's been a lot of deep analysis here that's been done, and appreciate their help, so we're here, we're here to answer any questions. Thank you.
Thank you, Doug. Thank you very much, Bill. We also have a speaker, Doug?
He's not going to speak.
He's not going to speak, okay. Any other speakers virtually?
Okay, Mayor and councilmembers, this actually concludes our speakers in person and virtually. Thank you.
Thank you. You know, I was very satisfied with this staff report that I read on this item, so I make a motion to approve the recommended action.
I'll second.
Okay, so the first and the second?
So, so Mayor, just, just so I can say, my belief still is that only the electorate should be able to increase the tax, so for that reason, I will be voting no on this.
That's good, thank you. Councilmember Starr. Madam Clerk, call for the vote?
Councilwoman Perez.
Yes.
Councilwoman Rodriguez.
Aye.
Councilmember Starr.
No.
Mayor Protemteran.
Yes.
Councilwoman Basua.
Yes.
Mayor MacArthur.
Yes.
Councilmember Perallo.
Yes.
And this motion carries six to one with Councilmember Starr voting no. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, everyone. The next item of the agenda is item M three. This is item M three, this is from, I will wait till. Yeah, that's what, yeah, it sounds like it, yeah. Bye, Chato, have a good night. Good evening, guys, good evening. We'll go to the next item on the agenda, this is item M three from the Community Development Department. Subject private parking ordinance. The recommendation is that the city council approve the first reading by title only, in way for the reading of the proposed ordinance titled, "An Ordinance of the City Council of the City of Oxnard Adding Division Three to Article Four of Chapter Eight of the Oxnard City Court Regarding Private Parking," filed by, filed by City of Oxnard Community Development Department, and provides the address. The Community Services Public Safety Housing and Development Committee approved this item back on May thirteenth, 2025, with the vote of three, zero. And Community Development Director Jeff Pingili is here to answer any questions. Any, any comments before we open it up to a public speaker? No? No, no, okay, then we'll go to, straight to a public speaker, Robert Power. Hi, Mr. Power.
Good evening, Mayor and City Councilmembers. Thank you very much for, for hearing this item tonight, and I'm here to answer any questions you may have, and I'll stand on the sidelines and ready for your questions. Thank you.
Thank you. I'm very supportive of it, having sat in this committee, they heard it, so I'm very supportive of this item, but I'll open up to any, any comments and discussions on it.
Yes, since Mr. Power is here, I would like to ask Mr. Power a question.
Yeah.
So, so, by the way, I think the proposal is very good, I'm in favor of it. I just wanted to know, after it's adopted, do you have any sense about of how soon this could be implemented at the collection?
After it's adopted, it should take about, within two to, two to four weeks.
Oh, wow.
Yeah.
That fast.
And, and we're, we will get notice to tenants, to the public and all that, probably thirty days prior to when we start, so, for example, we start August one, we won't start the enforcement until September one.
And, and if you, if you can, I just want you to take the opportunity to talk about what some of the benefits are to the community of having this.
Oh, yeah, it's huge, huge benefits. Just kind of go back in history, parking meters were invented back in nineteen thirty-five. Oklahoma City was one of the first cities in the country to put meters in, and it was to keep employees and merchants out of the prime customer parking spaces, so customers can park. So back, you know, a hundred years later, here we are now, dealing with parking. And same, same goal, same purpose. In our toolbox, you know, you have a few things that you can use to keep, you know, turnover of parking spaces. You know, you want customers to walk, drive down the street and see open spaces. You know, if they're going to a store, you want them to be able to park within, you know, a block or half a block or right in front of the store. And if they don't see those available spaces, perception is, there's a parking issue. I'm going to go somewhere else, I'm going to shop somewhere else. So it's really important for that visual aspect and for having the turnover of the parking spaces.
Thank you. Thank you, Stacey, for the great work you did on, on this item, I think it's great for our community, and I would just echo what I said at the, at the committee meeting, is just simply, because I figured the corporates are probably employees, just to simply advise them that on such day, it sounds like you did just that, such date is going to be implemented, effective such day, just give enough time, so they're advised that enforcement's coming.
Yes, yep, and we'll submit a big binder to staff, so staff has to approve it first, and it goes over signage, all that kind of stuff. We'll sit down, sit down with staff, they want to change anything, color schemes, wording, all that, we'll work with staff to do that. So that process usually takes a few weeks to go, I don't know how backed up staff is, but that usually goes pretty, pretty quick.
Wonderful. Go ahead, Councilwoman.
So I know that this, this proposal is like, the, the obvious example is the collection, but this ordinance would be citywide, and what other areas could potentially be affected besides the collection? So the collection is a good example, right?
Yeah.
Prime parking, quote unquote, would be for pay, pay-to-play, but there would still be free parking slots available, maybe a little further, correct?
Yeah, ninety-seven percent of parking at collection will still be free, it's just the prime, you know, just the prime spaces. Other locations, we have not looked at other locations, nor has, you know, other locations reached out to us. You know, what, the. You know, what the amount of time I spend in Oxnard, I mean, I don't see a lot of parking problems. In other locations, it seems like there's abundance of parking, with exception of collection. The collection has an abundance of parking. It's just the prime spaces, you need the turnover of those prime spaces, so.
So, I know this ordinance is specifically talking about like 200 slots or more than the private property owner could petition to do something like this. About how many parking spots are available at the collection? Just so we have an idea for the general public of like, how big is 200 parking slots or more?
So, 200 parking spaces, the collection has like 3,000 spaces.
Okay. So, the collection has about 3,000.
Yeah, it's a pretty, it's a pretty small, it's a pretty small number. And we, you know, we're based in Walnut Creek. In fact, Walnut Creek was one of the first cities to put parking meters in. It was actually so bad in the back during the 1930s that a state council member, before the meters were invented, proposed an ordinance to make it a misdemeanor if merchants are caught parking in front of, it failed three to two vote. Anyways, you know, we're then born after that time. But, yeah, it's just, you know, it's important to put programs together. You know, it's great to have a parking program, a parking issue, like the collection. That means you're thriving, you're doing great, you're doing well. You know, a lot of cities would die to have the issue that the collection has and this area has, so it's a good thing.
So, I guess the bottom line, when considering... Oh, you have an answer of other potential sites? Just, I think the bottom line would be, just because there is this possibility of enforcing parking or parking meters, doesn't mean that folks won't have access to free parking. I think that, when I spoke to several constituents, they were concerned. They were saying like, no, vote no, because they don't want to pay for parking.
Mayor, Mayor Pro Tem, Council Jeff Ben Gilli, Community Development Director. Yes, your point is well made, that this is not restricting parking in all areas. This just gives the private parking operator the ability, without city staff involvement, without Oxnard PD involvement, to manage their own parking spaces with one more tool, a parking citation that their vendor provides, that they manage the dispute process, they manage the payments, the city's not involved, this just allows them to do that. You asked about some other potential locations. Again, at citywide, the threshold is 200 parking spaces or more, so we're looking at any of our larger shopping centers. The shopping at The Rose, the Esplanade Shopping Center, Centerpoint Mall, Seabridge Marketplace come to mind, and there could be others that we're not thinking of. Again, we're not requiring them to submit to this program. We're just opening it up for any shopping center that has this need and a minimum of 200 parking spaces.
Thank you, Ms. Ben Gilli. Yeah, Ms. Power, go ahead.
A question. When the signage goes up, can we make a requirement the signage is at least high enough to try to prevent graffiti or stickers covering up the signs?
We can work with the shopping center owners on that. Most of the shopping centers have graffiti abatement programs and awareness, and if there's a height that is still highly visible to people entering the parking lot, we can put it up a little higher, we can work with them on that.
Thank you.
I do want to point out one typo in the staff report where there's a reference on, I don't have the packet number, but the second page of the staff report just mentions the minimum signage per state law. It should be 17 by 22. The ordinance is correct, but the staff report says 11 by 22. Minor typo.
17 by 22.
Thank you for that clarification. Any other comments? Now, what's the... Yeah, go ahead, Mayor Pro Tem.
Thank you. Just two quick things, Mr. Ben Gilli, just so it's clear. It sounds like that any property owner with a parking lot that meets a threshold of 200 or more parking spaces would be able to opt in to this program and seek information and guidance from our community development on how to do so. Is that correct?
That's correct. It's citywide, that's the threshold, private parking, commercial, retail, serving, you know, not residential, that's a different category. And then there's a, the program requirements are laid out in the ordinance, what they need to submit, and obviously, staff can answer any questions they have. There's no fee except for an hourly staff time for us to review the paperwork. Once they're in, as long as they don't make any changes and they're following the program they submitted, they won't talk to the city staff again. We will respond to any complaints if they're not complying with their program, but we will not be responding directly to any parking citation complaints. We would refer them back to the vendor.
Great, thank you. And I'll just say thank you to staff's work on this and to the folks who are on the application side and brought this to staff to consider. I also will support this. At the same time, I'd like to take an opportunity to promote for folks a book that actually the city manager had shared with us a couple of years ago called "Paved Paradise." Paved, P-A-V-E-D. "Paved Paradise: How Parking Explains the World" by Henry Grabar. And I thought it was going to be a little bit of a geeky read when he recommended it, but it was incredibly insightful about not only the history of parking, as Mr. Powers had mentioned, but also how it has just encompassed most everything we do as Americans, and we are creating space for cars where we could use that space for people. And I think one of the figures is like, every parking space at minimum is like $5,700 worth of value that could be used for other things, commercial space, residential space, open space, but we have to find somewhere to put our cars. So, anyways, I just recommend that book. It was incredibly insightful, and I think is germane to what we're discussing here with parking, so those are my comments. Thank you, Mayor.
Mr. Mayor, if I could add, we still have copies of that book if anyone wants to have a fun summer, a light summer read. I also would want to reiterate this item. It's about parking management. This is not about citations or revenue. Everybody wants not only free parking, they want free TV parking, which is that space right in front, right? I mean, every time you see it in the movie, one, the good guy or the bad guy has to go somewhere, somehow the parking space is always available. Everybody wants TV parking, and that really messes up local commerce. So, this is really about parking management. And if you think about it, I mean, if everyone had to walk 100 yards before buying that frappuccino, it'd be a healthier country. So, this is good all around.
I'd recommend skipping the frappuccino. When the time comes and the motions made, I do want to argue in favor of it and why I think people should vote for this.
Yeah. Who made the motion? I don't think anybody... No, I haven't. Just entertaining motion now?
Well, I'll move then.
I just want one other question, just because there was some resistance when I spoke to folks about the parking. So, if the threshold to qualify for this program would be at least 200 spots, how many, is there any restrictions or guidance on how many spots would be for pay versus free? So, would it be like 20% of the 200 spots would be spots you have to pay for, or is it only at like storefront? Does that make sense? Are there any requirements or thresholds where 50% out of the 200 spots are now, you have to pay?
Yes, Mayor, Council. Thank you for that question. This ordinance does not indicate or derive a parking operator to pay or not pay scenarios. It gives them a tool to enforce parking management, whether they have all free spaces but those that are highest demand are having trouble with turnover. It would allow them to use this tool to help enforce that and encourage turnover if they had proper signage posted saying, you know, one hour parking or 30-minute parking at these high-trafficed areas. It's their decision to use parking meters on their private parking, private streets, for example, is in the collection. This gives them a tool to enforce those parking meters. In other words, if the meters expire, it's, you know, everyone has the option by state law, the vehicle code, to tow, but that's an extreme situation that nobody wants to use, especially for their customers at a shopping center. This is an intermediate tool for them to enforce if they choose to use pay parking meters, that they can use this tool to help enforce that, but it also works if they have all free parking and they just have a high turnover area that they need to enforce time limits on.
Okay, the last thing I wanted to ask. I know that in the briefings, and I had a briefing with the company, should somebody make an attempt to make their payment, but there's really spotty Wi-Fi, or they have an inability to make the payment, there is a process for folks to contest that, correct? Can you speak a little bit more on that? Because I know it's part of the ordinance that we're requiring that.
Yeah, and again, outside of city staff, between the vendor, one of the things we'll review is their appeals and dispute process, and that's part of what they submit to the city. There's also arbitration and other things. They can request a hearing by a hearing officer, again, vetted by us for qualifications, but all of this managed by the vendor, and if they're still not happy with that, they can go to the further arbitration on that issue. Again, we look at the general criteria and make sure there's a dispute resolution policy, and everything's clear from the customer's perspective is how we're going to be looking at that, and state law was written that allowed this, was written clearly to protect consumers from abuse. And so, we will look out for that when we review the application, make sure the dispute procedure is clear, and they can have arbitration and other choices as part of that procedure.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Intertending motion. You did, okay.
So, speaking in favor.
Okay.
So, I read the ordinance. I think it's very well written. I think it solves a really huge problem that people don't necessarily appreciate. What tends to happen is sometimes employees like to park right next to the store, they're there all day, and they're taking up customer's... I see Councilman Peralo smiling at that. People will use a parking lot for their park-and-ride to do, to go elsewhere, so they'll take up space. It really denies shoppers, which is what merchants want. They want the shoppers in the parking spots, and by being able to put a price on something, you can better manage this. The problem in this world is when something is free, it gets overused to the point where no one can really get to use it unless they wait a long time in a line. Having this available, especially where you've got, and I don't call it TV parking, I call it rock star parking when you get to park right in front of the store, but, you know, people willing to pay that premium to be right next to the store, absolutely let them do that, and let's encourage the employees to park away from the storefront and encourage the folks that just want to loiter all day and not really buy anything, you know, encourage them to maybe spend time in the park instead. So, this is really a proposal that solves a problem that people don't appreciate, and for that reason, I'll be voting in favor of it.
Thank you. I too, just to speak on it, again, Stacey, thank you, Mr. Powers, thank you for this work. I think it's needed for our city. Pro-business, as many of you know, I think this creates a great environment to support businesses and allow them to thrive, so I think it's good, and it's balanced and it's equitable to shoppers as well. Should they have a dispute, I think you've got all the checks in there, so thank you for the work you did on this. So, do we have a... I know, Vice Mayor, you made a motion. There's a second. So, Madam Clerk, we'll call for the vote on it.
Councilmember Starr?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem Teran?
Yes.
Councilwoman Basua?
Yes.
Mayor MacArthur?
Yes.
Councilmember Peralo?
Yes.
Councilwoman Perez?
Yes.
Councilwoman Rodriguez?
Aye.
And this motion carries seven to zero. Thank you.
Thank you. We'll go to the next item on the agenda. This is item M4 from the Housing Department. Subject: Authorize the Assessment and Collection of Fees Within the Oxnard Downtown Management District for Fiscal Year 25-26. The recommended action is that the city council adopt a resolution authorizing the assessment and collection of fees within the Oxnard Downtown Management District for Fiscal Year 25-26. This item did not originate in committee, and the interim housing director, Ms. Lopez, is here, and her staff to answer any questions we may have. Do any councilmembers have any questions, the staff on this item? No? Any speakers on this item, Madam Clerk?
Mayor and councilmembers, we do not have any public speakers virtually or in person for this item. Thank you.
Thank you. Looks like you want to make a comment or discussion?
I do.
Go ahead.
First of all, I want to thank Brenda Lopez for answering my questions earlier today on pretty short notice. I asked for a copy of the annual planning report that was referenced on page 412 because it wasn't in the packet. She provided that to me. Apparently, it was something that came in front to the council back in November, back before most of us were on the council, so she provided me the copy of that. I'm very appreciative of that. She also asked me, she also answered a question for me that actually helped me go from a no vote to a yes vote on this, because I was planning to vote no, because mostly of the time, I think assessments are not a good thing, especially if they don't have voter approval. What kind of concerned me in the report on page 391 was it said that the fee bid was adopted by 87.65% of vote, but I thought to myself, well, wait a minute, not everybody votes. Roughly 20 out of every 100 votes is by the city, and of course, there's always low turnout, and I think it was about, you know, 22 out of 100, let's say, voted. So, even if every person voted no, if the city voted yes, it would still be adopted. And that kind of concerns me, because the city is in a position where it can put its thumb on the scale, especially when it draws the district of what properties are included. And if I was a cynical person, I'd say that, well, as a city, I would want to get just enough city properties in there just to make sure that our votes would carry the day, because we'll definitely vote and make sure, and still be able to maximize the tax revenue. In this particular case, what mattered to me was that a majority of the people that were not city property owners voted for this. So, because they voted for this, not the city, I'm inclined to vote in favor of this. I do have a couple of requests, though, for the future. When the next budget plan comes out in December, or November, I do request that the report include the previous year's budget and actuals, so, because I want to get a feeling for, you know, how well do we spend the money? Is it creating the most value we can create for those being assessed? I will also request that the next time this comes up for renewal, which I guess will be in 2029, I will, I'm requesting that the city refrain from casting a ballot in that decision. I think it's only the people that are really paying the tax that ought to vote on that. It sounds like you've got major support, so I think you'd get it anyway, but I think it's just a much better look for the city if it doesn't look like they're putting their thumb on the scale when it comes time for voting, because literally, if every single person had voted no, it would still be, it still would have been adopted. And that's my position. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Peralo, go ahead.
You had your hand up first.
Thanks, sir. Thank you, Councilmember. Just a quick question on that, just for clarification. How many properties, more or less, does a city own in this district? I don't know if I have that information offhand. Do you know, Abel, how many we have?
Or what the percentage is, Abel?
A percentage is fine, just a ballpark is fine also.
Like, actually, own, where they actually vote?
We'll have to do a quick tally. I don't know. I know there's 200 property owners and approximately 420-some-odd parcels, but we could get a little bit more information on that. Okay. And I apologize, I wasn't planning to ask questions on this, but I think this does spark important conversation. So, while that's being looked up, I would imagine, and I'm not a math major, so folks are welcome to correct me who are in the know of this if I'm wrong, but any properties that the city owns in this, are property taxes paid on that by the city?
Assessment.
On the assessment, would you, right? The assessment is paid, yeah. The city does pay their fair share of the assessment, which is approximately $163,000 annually. Okay. All right. I would imagine that there has to be some sort of diminishing rate of return where we own more properties, but we still have to pay on that, where you could certainly try and buy up as much as you want to tip the scales in your favor, but to what end when you're paying in more money than you might be getting from whatever it is that's, you know, being theorized could be railroaded through these types of initiatives? I don't know. Am I off-base on that? That we could buy so much property that it doesn't really benefit us in any way at some point? I mean, it's hard to say. I think we're actually kind of going in the opposite direction. I know we own some city property that we're looking to dispose of over time, and that would probably lessen our vote, you know, and the weight of our vote, you know, as time kind of progresses, so. Yeah, and that actually leads to, it's my recollection that we're actually looking to offload things or develop in other ways and bring other folks in to bring, to take up this property throughout the area, correct? That's correct. Okay. That was my last piece there. So, I mean, hypotheticals are fine, but in reality, this is what is in front of us and what we're looking at here, so I appreciate the responses to that, and, you know, if we know later on what the number of parcels are that the city owns, you know, we can get that to the clerk later, just so it can be on the minutes. Thank you.
We have one comment. I think it's, I'm sorry. Go ahead. You were first, please. The only, the only question that I have, Councilmember Starr, is potentially the city not voting the next time it comes up, as you kind of, you suggested. I'd like to get a clarification. The city, if they didn't vote, they would not be entitled to the benefits such as the sidewalk cleaning, the removal of human? Why would they receive the benefit if they're not allowed to vote?
They're just not casting the ballot. They're still part of these.
Okay. Okay, then I clarified. Thank you.
Go ahead, Heather.
Yeah, so, I lost my train of thought. Yeah, so basically, you know, the vote margin was seventy-two percent for those that were non-city voters. And combined with the hundred percent of what the city had, because they voted all their properties in favor, that's how they came up with the eighty-seven percent. My concern was, you do create a problem where potentially, if everybody really hated the tax and won't pay it anymore, that they'd still be outvoted by the city. In this case, I don't see any worry about the city not getting this adopted. So I mean, they provide the same level of service that they're providing now and to a level of satisfaction that the merchants are experiencing. I suspect that they'll vote for it again. So you've got seventy-two percent of the merchants to vote for it. And by, and by the way, the thing I wanted to point out as well was that it isn't the number of parcels, because depending on the type of parcel, the assessment is different. So what happens is that the voting is weighted by the assessment itself. And one can argue whether the weighting is correct, whether methodology is right. One could argue whether the portion that's considered special benefit versus general is off. I think that, I think it's kind of an overstatement to say only one or two percent at most is general benefit and the rest is special benefit. But that aside, the acid test for me is that seventy-two percent of the people that were not the city voted in favor of this. So while, while I might quibble, the bottom line is the people that are paying the bills here aren't quibbling. So that's my position.
And I know Abel's here. He can attest that I think this is something that's favorable. Right, Abel, to the downtowners, are you able to speak on that and how they view this?
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and members of council. Would you please, I'm going to ask you to repeat the question.
Just the question being, you know, in your interaction with the downtowners, it sounds even from the staff report that they are very supportive of this item.
Yeah, we're, the downtowners are being, are the other association, the nonprofit that does mostly the events. We actually have representation on our board from the downtowners in the name of Gary Blum. And we regularly also collaborate on events and others and assist with their programming as well. So they're very much in support.
Thank you. I think I see Angela Wycombe as well shaking her head in support. Okay. Any other pros or cons on this item?
Just a pro. I've seen the impact of what they've been able to do. I know that in our report, we had just some of the art pieces. I know that they've done a lot of, you know, just advocacy, safety, cleaning up. And I just, I see a lot of value in sustaining what is happening.
Yeah. Let me do this alliance to my, you know, I'm very big on aesthetics and beautification. So I know you and I have had those conversations, Abel. So I'm certainly in favor of this myself. Any other comments, pros or cons? No? What's the desire of council on this item?
I'll move the recommended action.
I'll second.
Okay. Madam Clerk, the other votes?
Mayor Pro Tem Teran?
Yes.
Councilwoman Basua?
Yes.
Mayor MacArthur?
Yes.
Councilmember Perillo?
Yes.
Councilwoman Perez?
Yes.
Councilwoman Rodriguez?
Aye.
Councilmember Starr?
Yes.
And this, the motion carries seven to zero. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. If I might, I just would like to invite you all to an art exhibition that we're doing in our office slash gallery this Saturday from 6:00 p.m. to 8:00 p.m. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Magana.
Cultural district.
Thank you, Angela. The next item on the agenda is item M5, Community Development Department. Subject: Planning Commission Stipend. The recommended action is that the City Council, one, approve the first reading by title only and waive further reading of the proposed ordinance titled "An Ordinance of the City of Oxnard," California Mending Chapters II, Article II, Division VII, Sections II through ninety-six and II through ninety-seven of the Oxnard City Code establishing a stipend for service on the Oxnard Planning Commission. And, two, adopt a resolution establishing a hundred and fifty-dollar per meeting compensation for the members of the Planning Commission of the City of Oxnard. And, three, approve a fiscal year 2025-26 budget appropriation for the general fund, available fund balance in the amount of twenty-six thousand, two-hundred-and-fifty dollars. And the Finance and Governance Committee approved this item two to one back on March 11th, 2025. And staff from the Community Development Department is here to answer any questions we may have. Before councilmember discussions, we will receive public comments. Speakers have three minutes to speak. And just a reminder, anyone wishing to speak on report M5, they can come forward to fill out a speaker card, or if you're joining us virtually, press, just as a reminder, Starr and I to raise your hand. And I see our clerk stepped away.
I think she's giving something.
Okay. Yeah. Oh, she's getting the.
Mayor, I would just like to clarify, I did receive communications from the Chair of the Planning Commission two different times.
Thank you for that. Go ahead, Vice Mayor.
As did I.
Okay.
So I have a quick question for Mr. Pearson. Thank you. Did you want folks to do disclosures? If we?
I thought we all did. Was it not to all the councilmembers?
I think, did you have direct outreach to you, councilmember?
Yeah.
Okay.
Just the email, yeah. Okay. So I guess we were all copied on that?
Yes. Thank you.
Okay. Yeah. Go ahead.
Thank you. Mr. Pearson, if you wouldn't mind just giving us a brief summary about this item in front of us, a little bit of the history and what we have in front of us tonight.
Yes, Mayor Pro Tem Teran and councilmembers. To that, before you is a request to provide a stipend to the planning commissioners for their service on the planning commission. Currently, our planning commission does not receive a stipend, so their service on the planning commission is on a volunteer basis. So their attendance at the meetings, their time preparing for the meetings, they currently do not receive any compensation for that time. So this request was initiated by the planning commissioner, planning commissioning chair, sorry. And so the planning commission did vote on that item. So they passed a resolution to bring to council a request to the, to provide a stipend. That action by the commission did not formally place that onto the City Council's agenda. So the Chair then presented that at a public, during the public speaking period of the planning, or the City Council. And the City Council directed staff to take that to the committee. In order for the committee to take action, City staff then prepared a report and presented that to the committee who recommended two to one at that time to provide a stipend to, or to recommend to the City Council that they provide a stipend to the planning commissioners of a hundred and fifty dollars per meeting. In order to receive that stipend, they do have to attend that meeting. So if a member did not attend the meeting, then they would not receive that stipend for that meeting. And with regards to that, staff did look at kind of what the attendance looks like at our planning commission meetings. So looking at that and looking at the attendance numbers, we typically end up canceling a few meetings each year. So we were looking at around eleven to fourteen thousand dollars a year in terms of what the stipend would likely be. But what's presented before you is essentially if the commission had every meeting and every commissioner showed up to every meeting and potentially accounting for one additional special meeting, if that was to arise. So that's generally what's being presented to you this evening. I also did want to note that there was one correction that was noted by one of the councilmembers that in the packet on page 495 to 496, it notes that it is Chair Rodriguez that supported the a hundred and fifty-dollar per meeting stipend. However, that should have been Committee Member Rodriguez. So just wanted to note that correction in the report there.
I noted that, too.
Thanks for the overview.
Promotion.
I crossed it out. Okay. Thank you, Mr. Pearson. Thank you. Any other?
I'm sorry, Mayor, if I can just add, also, normally when we have a change from committee to council, we like to highlight that in the report. This is a little bit of a longer one where we put some discussion there in the committee outcome, primarily being because staff actually did not have a recommendation at the committee level. We were simply carrying on a commission request. But this report also does clarify some of the information that was presented by the public at the meeting. So if you have questions on that, because that is new information that's been brought forward, we do have staff that's here to address that, primarily being on how the one fifty was recommended by the Chair of the commission and staff is available to respond and provide some additional clarity, which we did not do at the committee level, or if the council would like us to do so.
Thank you. We'll go to the public speakers next. Ronald, followed by Greg Ryan.
Thank you, Mayor. I will request that we wait until the presentation is available. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, and good evening, Mayor MacArthur, Mayor Pro Tem Teran, and members of the City Council and staff. My name is Ronald Aruejo. I'm the Chair of the Planning Commission, and I'm speaking on behalf of the Planning Commission in my remarks to you today. Before I continue further, I want to deeply thank the Community Development staff for processing and getting to this point over these past ten months. The Planning Commission is requesting that the City Council vote in favor of staff's recommendation to, one, approve the ordinance establishing a stipend for planning commissioners; two, adopting a resolution setting a one hundred and fifty-dollar per meeting compensation; and, three, approving a budget appropriation in accordance with the resolution. Oops. Planning commissioners do not receive compensation for their time in attending meetings, and Oxnard is in the minority of cities within Ventura County that do not receive compensation. In order to encourage qualified persons to become members of the planning commission, it is prudent and logical to offer compensation to current and future members to increase retention and applications to serve as a member. Until just recently, for the past two years, all the Oxnard planning commissioners were newly appointed, an exception in Ventura County, in which all had at least one member serving their second or higher consecutive four-year term. It is possible and reasonable that if compensation were offered in the past, there would have been more members still serving on the planning commission for a second term, thereby contributing with their institutional and historical knowledge and deliberations. The following slides are a graphical presentation of the data that has been previously transmitted to you, starting with Ventura County. Next is our neighbor to the north of Kern County. Data for all cities were solicited via the official email account of the relevant staff department. Our populous neighbor to the south of Los Angeles had an option in a city to provide a higher amount to their chair. And finally, our neighbor to the west, Santa Barbara, had a couple jurisdictions reimburse for mileage or relevant city expenses on top of their stipend. This slide shows the previous four counties in one graphic. And this slide on stipend amount per capita serves as a proxy to compare and contrast on a more equal footing by taking into account the size of a city or the county. Offering a modest compensation to current and future members is in the best interest of the city to improve their retention and recruitment of qualified persons to become planning commission members, and that those members are compensated comparably to members of other cities within Ventura County and the surrounding counties of Kern, Santa Barbara, and Los Angeles. The planning commission strongly urges that the City Council approve staff's recommendations. And while I'm now part of the official staff presentation, I'm available and additionally invite you to ask any questions. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you, Ron. Thank you very much. Good evening, Greg.
Good evening. Good evening, Mayor and council. With all respect to all of our volunteers and the different things that go on, the planning commission historically is an incredibly important body. Can't say for Oxnard or other places, a lot of people get their teeth wet politically by serving on the planning commission. It is a volunteer thing in the same way that you all volunteer a lot of your time. I know you have some money for it, but you far, far put in more work than you are reimbursed. And I think that sometimes we have to put our best foot forward. And this is not a slap in the face of any other group. But the planning commission is asked to give you guys a basis to make decisions. They're the ones that are supposed to know with their environmental impact report. They're the ones that are supposed to come and be able to tell you about soil and different things. The amount of work they do is not in the meeting, it's before the meeting. It's in all the preparation that they're asked to do. So I strongly would ask you to think about that. And to me, I don't know if this is an issue for any of you, but it doesn't really matter who came up with the idea, whether it was the planning commission chair or a homeless person on the street. What's right is right, and they are more than worthy of a small stipend, because truly, it's not what they do in the meeting. The meeting is the result of all the work they put before the meeting. You all know that because of all the work you have to do. And they do it as well. So thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Ryan. Madam Clerk, any other speakers, virtually or in person?
Mayor and councilmembers, that concludes our speakers in person and virtually for this item. Thank you.
Thank you. I just restate my position. I think that was a very conservative number. And for all the points that Ryan mentioned, Ron mentioned, I am very much in support of this. And I think it's a very conservative number. And I'm very appreciative for all the time that they put in. So I'm in support of it myself.
So Mayor, at the appropriate time, I'd like to argue against the proposal.
Absolutely. Go ahead. Well, let's hear, I make a motion to.
I'll second the motion.
Okay. We'll go to you for discussion.
This country really is founded on volunteerism. We have a long history of that. People do a lot of volunteering. People volunteer with their PTAs, Little Leagues, Neighborhood Watch programs, Boy Scouts, churches, synagogues, mosques, nonprofit groups that feed the hungry or care for abused animals. And to me, it's just no longer volunteerism if you're getting paid for it. And then the question becomes, what happens down the road? Do we start paying people to serve on CAGs and neighborhood councils because we think an insufficient number of volunteering? I, I'm a firm believer that part-time public service should be a little bit of a sacrifice. And what you get in exchange for that public service is a bigger say in what gets decided. You know, very few people actually know this, because I don't really talk about it. And I know a few members of the council know about this, but not all of them. I have refused to accept any compensation for being a councilmember. And over four years, that would add up to about a hundred grand. And that's not a small amount of money. And just to be really clear, I'm, I'm not criticizing any of my colleagues for accepting the compensation offered to them. I mean, I could certainly use the money, but it goes against my values and ideals to accept it. And while I understand the arguments that are made, and I appreciate the arguments that are made in favor of this, I find that I just simply can't get there. I disagree, and I'll be voting no.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Sir. Go ahead, Vice Mayor.
All right. Thank you. I'd like to make a few statements here in favor of this. Number one, I watch all the planning commission meetings, just because I want to have that context for when, if those items come to us for approval, recommendation, or on appeal. And I've seen this particular item play out since its inception in the public meetings. But I see it a little differently than Councilmember Starr does, and I see it through an Oxnard community lens. There's certainly volunteerism. To say that this country, you know, certainly was founded or started with volunteerism, absolutely. Volunteerism, very altruistic. I volunteer for a number of things. I contribute in any number of ways to organizations and efforts in our community. But I also want to remind folks that there's a continuum of this type of work. There's volunteerism, then there's big asks, then there's heavy lifts, then there's exploitation. And I think it's important to remember that in a community like Oxnard, that there are a lot of people who have a lot of really great experience, a lot of great ideas, and really great skills, who can contribute in any number of ways to our community. really great skills, who can contribute in any number of ways to our community. They can do so through volunteering. They could also do so in ways that bring incredible knowledge and skills to the table to further this city in what we're doing. If they're willing to volunteer that, great. But in a community like Oxnard, the statement that was made by Councilmember Star, I appreciate it, in declining compensation for council work. Respectfully, though, what comes to mind for me is what an amazing privilege that is to be able to decline $20,000 a year to do this work. I don't think the average Oxnard resident can easily do that kind of declining. I can say financially for myself, I am in that boat, where I, I am not in a financial position to just say, no, I couldn't use that. I need to give it back regardless of my ideals, values. I certainly think that if I could volunteer for this, I absolutely would. And I'm willing to release my last five years of tax returns if everybody else would as well up here, so if you'd like to see that. But the point being that in a community like Oxnard, we need to be able to look at this in a way that if people are giving us their time, that is one of the most valuable commodities and resources that people have. And again, there are some great experiences and great knowledge that people bring to these CAGs, but when we, when we don't compensate them for that, for what they bring to the table, we run into other issues, because there are other incredibly important competing priorities for people, such as work, such as other obligations, such as putting food on the table, such as keeping a roof over your head, which I would say the majority of our community have to think about on the forefront of their mind, and some of them struggle with perpetually. So with that, that's my argument in favor. If there are concerns that this will lead to a precedent for other CAGs, then good. Let's have that conversation about the other CAGs, too, because they are also volunteering their time for those areas in which they oversee. And with compensation comes accountability as well. I think that's an important thing to remember. The last thing is actually, we did receive a number of written comments, and I appreciate the comments that were sent in. And I see Ms. is here in the audience as well who sent one. I'd just like to read just a couple of quick lines here from a planning commissioner from Simi Valley, although she did send this as her own self, not representing the planning commission or the city. But so Commissioner Crisman had said, "As a fellow planning commissioner serving the city of Simi Valley, I initially held the position that public service in this capacity should remain strictly voluntary, as I personally chose to, in a way, forego this compensation and instead donate my stipend to local causes. However, after Chair Ronald Aruejo spoke at our planning commission meeting in February, and after hearing firsthand accounts of the workload, scheduling conflicts, and time demands involved in Oxnard's processes, I have since reconsidered my position. While not every community shares the same dynamics, I believe we should maintain an open mind when it comes to making sure that the most qualified and committed individuals, regardless of financial background, job obligations, or caregiving responsibilities, can serve in these important public roles. And offering a fixed stipend similar to what the city of Simi Valley provides, which is approximately half of what their city council's monthly compensation is, could help offset legitimate after-hours childcare or eldercare costs, transportation expenses, or lost wages." So I want to thank her for sending that in. It was great to have that insight from another city's planning commissioner as well. And I thank Mr. Aruejo, or Chair Aruejo, and I see that Dr. Lopez is here as well. I thank you and your fellow commissioners for all the work you've done, and all the work that's gone into putting this together and doing all the research and working together with staff to bring this before us. I'm in support of this. I agree it's a modest amount, and I'm sure we'll reevaluate as time goes on. And if it leads to discussion of other CAGs, great, those folks do great work, and not everything is probably the same, and they'll have different ideas, but we should have that conversation, too, because they are part of this community. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Any other pros, cons? Councilwoman Perez, go ahead.
Thank you, Mayor, for the recognition. I, too, will be supporting this agenda item. I recognize the valuable hours and expertise that many of our commissioners play a role in just advising our, our city. And so I think that being able to offer that expertise is something that should not be overlooked. But I also want to point out that this really, as I often think about the future, I don't always just focus on the present, but I think about the future of who eventually could have the opportunity to serve on the planning commission. I know that this really levels the opportunity for those that, yeah, don't come from a financial background, to be able to do things for free, considering we live in a world that requires compensation to be able to make ends meet. And so really, I think that this will allow and open up doors for not just experts, but for those to be able to be compensated for their time and for their talent. And so, again, really supportive of this and grateful for the work of our planning commissioners, and thank them for attending tonight as well.
Thank you. Yeah. Go ahead, Ms. Perlo.
Yes, I will support this, but I, I cannot pass the opportunity to sunshine some stuff here that needs to be sunshineed. When I was a member of the public and I would come to city council, one time, quite some time ago, there used to be a coffee pot for the public, and the meetings would go along. And when I got elected on council, I bought a coffee pot, a commercial coffee pot, bought the sugar and the coffee, got chastised a little bit by some of the staff, and I even got told who's going to clean it up at the end of the night. So I did it for a while. Our current city clerk may remember some of those things. She did not chastise me. But I always used to bring the thing up, and I know that Mr. Aruejo, because he's talked to me about it in the past, when he asked me for an endorsement of a political campaign. Mr. Perlo, you always used to bring up the comment, "The people in the planning commission don't even get gas money or a cup of coffee." And that's 100% right. But when I was on the council, I asked to get something for them. I never could get anything for the rest of the, from the rest of the council to bite on that. It wasn't this council, but past councils. And I've been on this council since June of 13. The issue that I have with this is possibly the amount of money, but I did watch the community meeting. And the community meeting bothered me extensively when the mayor, no derogatory, mentioned, because Mr. Aruejo had mentioned even up to a price of $500 a meeting. And I'm like, holy crap, wait a minute, 500 bucks? And the mayor made the comment, well, you know, you could see possibly that happening. And I'm like, wait a minute, wait a minute. There is a limit. But current times, the Clean Power Alliance, which is made of committees of cities and two counties, LA and Ventura County, just approved $150 a meeting for those members. They did. It was pretty heated, not heated, it was a very lively discussion, but they wanted to make sure the people that showed up and answered the roll stayed for the meeting and at least voted on some action items so that they got the money, not just somebody calling up saying, "I take the role and I get paid." There were real concerns about that. I'd like to make sure that those things are tight in this organization. One of the other issues that I have is, I give all the credit in the world to Mr. Aruejo. I couldn't do it as a council member to get the council up here. He had whatever it took to put this through the planning commission and bring it forward. But when you do that and you use information that's incorrect or incomplete, that has to be sunshineed. And Mr. Aruejo, when you made the presentation and you mentioned various things, and I, I don't want to embarrass anybody, so I won't read the entire amount, but I'm extremely grateful that the city of Oxnard went through and verified what you said and pointed out where mistakes were made, or possibly omissions, by fault or on purpose, I don't know. But when those things were made and included in the presentation, I'm extremely grateful that the city staff checked and double-checked it, and I hope my council members read that, because it matters with respect to, you know, somebody's, the ability to take what somebody says in the future. So I will support this. I am not looking forward to having a discussion where we're going to start paying $500 per meeting. I'm saying it right now. Even if I survive and am elected the next term, there's a limit, because the people that spend time on specific neighborhood councils, not all of them, put in a heck of a lot of time. When do we decide which CAGs are worthy of payment? There was nothing in the presentation about other cities that pay their CAGs or pay neighborhood councils. There just are some things, and, and one of the issues that bothers me, it says, even Mayor Protem made a comment, you know, people can't afford, there's a heck of a lot of people that have applied for these things, and getting on the planning commission is simply a matter of enticing an elected official to put your name in there and then get voted in. I don't know that any elected official goes out to look for somebody financially in a higher strata to get one of these jobs. This always has been, in my mind, since I really got involved in the city of Oxnard, say, in the late 80s, that this was considered a stepping stone. I know of one council member who did come from the planning commission, Mrs. Irene Pinkert. There are a lot of other peoples have tried, didn't work. But when we talk about possibly this would allow the recruitment, in the staff report from the committee, the recruitment of young people who may be sacrificing potential earnings, well, I remember in the back-and-forth discussions, I mean, all those people, we have two of them sitting here, they're sacrificing earnings, and there was compensation asked because of the hardship. Maybe you would have to get childcare when you came to the meeting. If we carry that further, and we carry on to, on page 494, when we address that some of the staff reports are from 125 pages to over 3,000, I do remember that the big planning commission books were pounds, they were like a sack of beans. They were extremely heavy, a lot of material. And so if we're going to look for childcare, potentially payment, do we look for childcare when you take the time to read the report so you can be prepared? I don't know the answers to those things, but I needed to daylight that, because when I first heard the committee, I was going, I want to verify this stuff, I want to find that if it's factual. And when I did find some of the things that there was an issue, I did have a problem. But I will support this, and I do believe that we're going to have to take a look at the rest of the CAGs. This body is extremely important, and if, and the city attorney, if you can correct me, this is considered a state-of-California constitutional body. Is that correct, or something along that line?
Well, it's a statutory body. It is, it is, has provisions within the government code, the planning and zoning law.
Okay. Thank you very much. The rest of the CAGs, I don't believe do, but the rest of the tags, when this is given, and I will support this, I do believe that they deserve compensation, but I believe this will be something we will be looking forward in the future.
Thank you. Any other comments, pros or cons? If not, I'll call for the vote.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
Oh, actually, I have a comment, but I can't wait till after the vote.
Okay. Thank you.
Councilwoman Basila?
Yes.
Mayor MacArthur?
Yes.
Councilmember Perlo?
Yes.
Councilwoman Perez?
Yes.
Councilwoman Rodriguez?
Yes.
Councilmember Starr?
No.
Mayor Protem Turan?
Yes.
And this motion carries six to one with Councilmember Starr voting no. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Wood, you want to make a comment?
Yes, that was a really interesting policy discussion. I definitely can understand both sides of the coin here, but I think there is a bigger picture that I heard here, which is, over the decades, as a community or a city like this evolves and transforms, who are the people who get to the seats of, seats and positions of power and influence when it comes to policymaking? And I think there is a bigger picture there. In this country, volunteerism, just like philanthropy, tracks exactly to socioeconomic class. So as I sat here and listened to you all speak, I could, the, the big picture comes into focus, and I realized, because I just looked out the door here, and we have there the wall of mayors. And if you look at that and understand the context of it, this actually makes sense. So thank you. The other thing I'll say is, now, after you adjourn, I'm going to go straight to In-N-Out and do my TV parking, right in front.
Rock star parking.
Rock stars don't drive.
If, anybody... I see there's no further business on the agenda, and without any objection, we are adjourned. Thank you, everybody.